Okay, good evening, everybody. We call to order the Chisholm City Council regularly scheduled meeting, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Susan, would you please take roll call?
Yes. Counselor Halberschitz.
President.
Counselor Michael Rahab.
President.
Counselor Fawcett.
Here.
Counselor Halaba.
President.
Counselor Vati.
Here.
Mayor Lance.
Here. All right, council, before we start tonight, I want to apologize for everybody at home who will be watching this and rewind as something's wrong with the server tonight, so we are not live. We do have one addition, number five under myself, to schedule a working session. And that, I believe, is the only addition. So I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda with that addition.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? A motion carries. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Marty, is there any public participation signed up?
No.
Okay. We'll start off with council reports. Jed, good evening.
Good evening, sir. I attended the Senator Seward District meeting today, and I also attended the EDA meeting last week, that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Cheyenne, good evening.
Good evening. I attended the Precious Paz meeting just before this. Really good discussion. I think we'll probably have some more discussion about some dog ordinances coming up. Really good discussion there tonight. We've had some budget meetings attended, and then I've also attended some of the HRE call with HUD representatives. I was not able to attend the meeting itself because I was sick, but I did call in for that, so, ended up.
Excellent, thank you. Travis, good evening.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. I was at the Community Foundation meeting prior to coming here tonight. Things are going well with the Community Foundation. We're looking at the potential of a chili cook-off of some kind during the days in February, which I polar, I'm drawing a blank on what we call that. Polar Bear Days?
Polar Bear Days.
Polar Bear Days, there we go. So that's exciting. The wine tasting is December first for the Community Foundation, so tickets will be available for that here coming up shortly. School, second week of school, school's back in session, so kids are, kids are back in the schools, and all of us teachers and stuff are lost it already. But it's going well, athletics are going well. It's a great, great time. I just want to highlight one thing that, there was an announcement today about that after-school care is indeed going to start up, so that's a great thing for a lot of parents. So, Community Ed is in charge of that, so contact Community Ed. Other than that, I think that's it for me tonight.
Travis? April, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm just so thankful to be here today, so, and it's good to see everybody. I attended some working sessions via Zoom, so that was, that was a good thing. Also, I wanted to, I believe it's the, our, is it the veterans that put up the pavilions? The two pavilions? I want to say they're amazing, they're beautiful, and thank you, thank you so much. And, uh, just come over, thank you.
Thank you. Marty, good evening.
Good evening. I attended the public meetings for the Fifth Street South project, our working sessions, and Parks Trails Recreation Meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Myself, yeah, so the CBA and the, the American Legion, I'm sorry, for the, put up those, yeah, great plans on there. And again, you know, what everybody does inside our community, try to make it a better place. Tuesday, I took a tour of the Public Safety Building, attended a meeting over there. I think we start seeing walls up by mid-October. Some walls coming up sooner than others, but I think we should have most of them up by the end of October, and it's gonna start taking some really cool form over there. Also, yes, Fifth Street project we've been meeting on, budget discussions, seems like there's all sorts of meetings been happening. But, um, yeah, one more thing happening tomorrow would be a kids' night up at the Museum of Mining, so another one of our festivities in town that our nonprofits and volunteers put on, so if you are available and around, come and check it out, four to seven. And that's it for me. Good evening. Tiffany, ambulance director.
Good evening. I have no report, if there's any questions.
Any questions, Tiffany? Excuse me. Fire Chief, Christmas Souci is out with the training and hiving tonight. Police Chief?
I don't have a formal report, sir.
Any questions for Chief Manner? Building and zoning official, Mandy?
I have no reports. I have the ones on the chat.
Okay. City engineer, Mr. Johnson?
I have no report. You already, you're working on Fifth Street, so we're in good shape for that.
City Parks Trails Rec Director, Ms. Boruska, good evening.
Good evening. I did want to share some feedback I got on the phone today from a citizen who grew up here, and he's now moved to San Francisco, but he's working with me on Memorial Bench, and he wanted to share that Chisholm is the best-looking town on the range, and he's so impressed when he went around town to try to determine where the bench should go. He thought everything looked amazing, and that was his feedback for us. And, let's see, we do have an opportunity with United Way. They contacted Parks and Rec about a born-learning trail, and so the Chisholm Parks Board met about that and are pretty excited about the United Way doing this project. Born-learning trail is like an educational component of a public park where kids, their signage, that, it can be literacy, it can be numbers, it could be anything like that, but then maybe some paint on a sidewalk and different activities that they do. So, we're looking at that into next year, but that is a project that we think should move forward. And then, the other thing is, we did lose one of our board members to resignation, Brittany Brown, and so we will be opening a board seat and advertising for that. That's my own updates, unless you have questions.
Good work, Bridget, thank you.
Thank you.
Did I, public works supervisor, Larry? I know you can take it, so.
It's untraditional.
Let's just move him down later. Suze, library supervisor is out this evening, city attorney, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor, no formal report, but I'm happy to field any questions the council may have.
Questions for Brian?
No question, Brian, but Q. honest, or I mean, Q. honest, the chamber does want to talk to you about the membership thing that we had a small chat about.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Before I forget.
Perfect. Larry, last chance. Be good. City clerk, treasurer, Ms. Ah, good evening.
Good evening, council. Nice to see everyone. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and to all the department heads for engaging in last night's budget meeting, which was quite lengthy, but we did a lot of good work with almost to the point of setting our preliminary tax limit. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know it's, it's a hard time of the year, so, good job, everyone.
Thank you, Eileen.
Good job to you.
City administrator, Ms. Grabah, good evening.
Good evening. I just want to piggyback on Eileen's gratitude for the budgets. It's always kind of a difficult time of year, but thank you for everybody participating in that, and like she said, we're getting close, and thank you to Eileen for your hard work on the budgets. I did have, the city did have the Senate bonding tour last week, so they came and visited our potential bonding areas to be funded, which one was the city garage is where they came, and then we also have infrastructure projects that have been submitted to the bonding, too. We, we will also have the House Bonding Committee will be coming in a couple of weeks also, so, just wanted to update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, moving along to consent agenda, which consists of our list of bills, communications, which are May ninth, library board minutes, July twelfth, police commission meeting minutes, August first, Chisholm Parks Trail and Rec minutes, advisory board meeting minutes, September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, Strong Towns agenda, minutes of previous city council meetings, August ninth, regular meeting, August ninth, working session, August twenty-first, Chisholm Hiving Airport Authority joint meeting, August twenty-third, working session meeting minutes, and August thirtieth, public hearing, including payroll and overtime. So nothing to add or correct, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business, so on to new business. Tiffany, Larson, ambulance director, good evening.
Good evening. All right, I have two things for tonight on the agenda. The first one is a request to finalize the change, the chassis on the ambulance from the Dodge to the Ford. It appears as if we're going to be unable to order a Dodge, so this would be the other option for us.
Okay, council, due to availability and the market, some people chose not to continue on, so I would look for a motion to approve this change from Dodge to Ford chassis.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item I have is requesting the addition of an optocom system on this new ambulance. The optocom system is an infrared system that will flip the stoplight of another optocom stoplight to green for an emergency vehicle, and then the side roads to red. It is also what they're using to open the garage doors of some of the newer hospitals they've been building. Yep? Yeah, I felt the same way. The other way, it's, it's not very convenient to call somebody from inside the hospital to come outside to open the door for us every time they come in, so.
Very, council, and shame on me, and I do apologize on that last one, how insignificant it might seem, anything that is related with the ambulance, the three of us should be outstanding, so.
Oh, got it.
My apologies.
No problem.
Mister, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Just a few questions. So, is this system implemented in Chisholm on any of our stoplights?
Not on our stoplights, but it is in the surrounding communities.
Okay. Have we looked to see how much that would cost to implement that in Chisholm, so we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'm just, just, just wondering, and then, does ambulances one and two have this same system?
They do not have the same system. So it ideally be something we would add as those ambulances get replaced, otherwise, in the research that I've done on it, it's going to cost about two thousand apiece to retrofit.
Okay, and then this system is two thousand?
Yes.
Right, and then, and this is going on the brand-new?
Yes, this would be put in as they build it.
As they build it.
So it would be integrated into one of the emergency lights, you wouldn't even be able to see it.
Awesome. Is there any way that eventually we could figure out how much that would cost Chisholm to have that put up on Main Street?
I would imagine.
Just so we can be consistent and give, maybe even on the fire, emergency vehicles and things like that, I think it's, I think it's great.
It does help in the safety aspect of it.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Absolutely. Right, council, I would look for a motion to approve the addition, sorry, of the optocom system? Sorry, was that a motion, April? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yep.
Look for support?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion?
One final question. So it is two thousand?
Yep, yep. So that is the change order that they sent me. The boxes are to the left there, for the yes and right, so that is their quote on it.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Should we do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Halberschitz.
Aye.
Counselor Michael Rahab.
Aye.
Counselor Fawcett.
Aye.
Counselor Halaba.
Upstand.
Counselor Vati.
Upstand.
Mayor Lance.
Upstand. Any opposed? No, sorry, sorry. Motion carries. Thank you. It's been a long week.
Thank you.
So I'll do that. Mandy, good evening.
Mayor, before we move on, the first one, the three of you have standing as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want us to redo it? Or just, I don't know.
Yeah, so, just, Mayor, if I may, I, I think on that first vote, we've acknowledged it, the, the change wouldn't affect the outcome of the vote, it was unanimous vote, so I, I don't think there's any problem in, in leaving that as it stands.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. And again, sorry, council, I was, you know, insignificant or not insignificant, but thank you very much. Mandy, good evening.
Good evening. I am just looking for your approval to approve the attached residential redevelopment grant agreement from the ICA RRB. There are six structures on the agreement, five garages and one house. The house and the garage is a Habitat for Humanity project, and once that structure is removed, a new structure will be built on the ground.
Excellent.
I just want to, just say thank you for writing this grant, and it was eighteen thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars that you received, right?
Yes.
And good job.
Oh, thank you.
The council, I'd look for a motion to accept the residential redevelopment grant, approve it.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion?
One point, we're gonna make sure we have complete, full legal approval, right?
We do, yes, they are all.
One hundred percent this time, right?
They're a hundred percent privately owned.
Okay. Do we have complete approval?
Complete.
Okay, good.
Good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing them, motion carries. Good evening, Jim. See what I can barge up next.
Good to see you go, all of you, right? Cheerio tonight, so. I assume, or I'll, if you go to page forty, I'll quickly take you through a couple of details before we go back to that summary. You seem to appreciate that. I get too long-winded, and you don't want that any longer, certainly advise me. If you'll go to column G, it's the work completed to date, and if you'll add up all the numbers down through line seventeen, which is twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, just draw a line under that, the total construction work completed during this past month of August amounts to one million ninety-nine thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-two cents, one zero nine nine four three two point six two, and if you multiply that number by one point seven five percent, you'll come up with the nineteen thousand two hundred forty dollars and seven cents that you see immediately below that, and that's that fee that is collected by profit for Idolphson and Peterson. And, so you see, the actual total work completed, the cost during that period is right there at the bottom of one million one hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred seventy two dollars and sixty-nine cents. And then I'm gonna take you over to the first column under I, total completed and stored to date, and this is for the purposes of determining what the retenege is, the five percent retenege. Do not include that first number of four hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred dollars, but if you add up that, the second number, the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and go down and draw a line under, again, line seventeen, or the sixty thousand dollar figure there, the total of those numbers between lines two and seventeen is one million seven hundred thirty thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents, one seven three zero five six five point four eight. And if you multiply that number by five percent, it totals eighty-six thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents that you'll see on the next page when we get to that retenege number, so. And then, at the bottom of that column, that you'll see on the next page as well, is the total work completed to date or cost, accrued to date of two million four hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, which amounts to, I believe it was twenty-two percent of that total construction cost that we'll go. So now, if you go back to page thirty-nine, take you quickly through that, again, that original contract was eleven million one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars, and then if you go down to line four, total completed and stored to date, is that number that we looked at on the previous page of two million four hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. The next is that five percent retenege that will deduct, that we hold for right now, of eighty-six thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, which means line six, then, is your total earned less that retenege, is the two million three hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Previous payments of applications one through five, I believe, yes, one through five, previous payments of one million three hundred sixteen thousand three hundred forty dollars and sixty-seven cents. So the current payment due is one million sixty-eight thousand eight fifty-one point oh six. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would recommend it for approval. It has been approved by Wendell and by staff.
Hey, council, any questions for Jim? Again, great explanation, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Mister Mayor, can I just ask a question?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Jim, have they been checking in with you and just giving you reports every week?
We are attending a weekly status meeting at two o'clock on Tuesday afternoons, and then Mandy is out there on a regular basis coordinating, doing the testing. She is involved also, contractors meeting periodically, Mandy at ten o'clock on Tuesday mornings, just to see when she needs to be there to do the inspections and so forth, so. It's going extremely well, and I think we're all invited, although you have to have a vest and, and hard hat on, to come to those weekly status meetings at one o'clock on Tuesday, so. The mayor was there with us yesterday to take a tour, so, it's fun to see what's going up, and start to imagine the rooms that are in that building.
Perfect. And I'm adding on to that, council, next Monday and Tuesday, Brendan from AP is gonna stay late, and he's going to give a tour to the fire department at six PM on Monday, and then show the ambulance staff on five PM on Tuesday. So if anybody wants to stop doing it those times, feel free and come and take a walk along. Hey, council, I would look, if there are further questions, I would look for a motion to accept pay application number six, in the amount of one million dollars, one million sixty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-one and six cents.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Travis.
No, that was Marty.
Thank you, Marty.
Call support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Bridget, good evening.
Good evening. There's a few on the Parks and Rec agenda, and the first one, Pete Carroll here tonight from BAR Engineering, we're asking for approval to enter into contract with BAR for Phase Two redhead expansion and amenities, and Bella and Jordan are both here, who serve as public managers on this, so all three of them could probably answer any question you have, but BAR's proposal includes concept design, preliminary and final design, as well as construction support, and his expertise could, could answer your questions, I do believe. I know a little bit about this project, but I'd like him to share if you have any questions, or if you just want him to present on it.
Council thoughts? Come on up and, go ahead.
Sure.
Please.
Well, thanks, council, for considering the proposal tonight, and I can just give it a high level. So this is for the LCC MAR funding that was received for the Redhead mountain bike park expansion, and essentially, it's for two primary tasks. One is associated with trail design, so this would be expanding the existing trail network from twenty-five miles to, up to the twelve additional miles that were originally included in the, the original design and the original environmental assessment worksheet for the park. So this has largely been contemplated from the time when the park was originally constructed, and now we've got funding to, to build that out. One of the things that will be done is reassess, because it's been, you know, since twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, when this was originally designed, are these the trails that we want? Do we want to tweak that design a little bit? We would not change the overall mileage, it would just be, are the trails in the location that we want, and the difficulty level that we want? So there's a little bit of work for reassessing that and re-establishing those trails in the And those trails are typically built off of concept design, so we would get to a concept design phase, and then at that point, it would be opened up to, you know, contractors to build in the subsequent phase. And then the, the second task is for concept design of amenities at the trailhead, so this would include potentially a pump track, a skills development area, and other line items that were identified, signage, things like that, identified in the LCC MAR grant proposal in the first place. So at this point, we've got ideas of what things we'd want to include, the whole cost or the design of those items haven't been identified, or exactly where they would be placed physically on the land, and so that's what this stage of design would, would be, is to conceptually, you know, meet with the stakeholders, get those things ironed out, and physically pinned down to a location. Bridget mentioned that there, this is the concept design phase for that, there would actually be a subsequent phase for design on a couple of those items, so when you, for example, if we're doing any paved parking lots, at this point, we're just identifying where it's going to be, there would be a subsequent phase of design for specifications for those, so that, that could be provided to a contractor later on. So, we anticipate a couple of design steps on this, but this would be for the, the first phase, to really identify exactly what's gonna go there, where it's gonna go, get everybody pointed in the same direction, and then enter into a final design phase, and then contracting for build, with the anticipation that construction would take place in twenty twenty-four largely, with the option of extending into twenty twenty-five if necessary, but largely, we'd be shooting for next year on this. And it's pretty much the same team that did the original design for Redhead, so I'm involved, BAR Engineering, and we also have subcontracted Scott Lindenberg from K-Lin, who did the trail construction management out in the field, so we're bringing back kind of the same team that we had the first time.
So working through the locations, you're talking about, you know, the pump track and that stuff, are you bringing in, like, any from the county, the fairgrounds, I imagine that's kind of the area you're anticipating?
Yeah, the area that's been dedicated to the trailhead would be, you know, that's already been surveyed, so we know kind of what the area would look like, and so it's a matter of placing amenities in that location, and if consideration for major events, like, if we have, and, and do anticipate having the high school mountain bike meet here again, state meet, overspill parking, where that would take place, and things like that. And we've got, yeah, that's, that's part of the design, we've got landscape architects on our team, will help put those things together as well.
Okay. Council, any further questions?
I just have a quick question, Mister Mayor. That's our, for the one
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. That's our um for the one point six-six million that you guys received, um do you guys have to have matching funds with that? No?
Our matching funds require just a fiscal agent, which the city of Chisholm agreed to be, and the funds will be appropriated through the city of Chisholm.
Wonderful. And good job. Good job. Everybody.
Any other questions?
And um you said the cost estimate is thirty-five thousand, three hundred, right?
Right.
Okay. For everything that you just said. Wow.
Yep.
That's a great deal.
Oh, that, excuse me, that is for one of the tasks and then the second task is for eight thousand, two hundred for a grand total of forty-three thousand, five hundred.
Counsel, if there's no other uh questions, I believe this is definitely needed before you uh decide spending money and putting infrastructure in the ground or creating new landscapes. So I would uh look for a motion to accept the um or allow to to entry into the contract with Bar for design consulting, forty-three thousand, five hundred.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pete? You think I might have taken a break from this for a while. I just. I'm webbed.
And my apologies on the memo. I had the first number, not the total, so my bad, sorry. Um the next uh the next request is to enter into contract with Eric Carlson at Range Trail Works. He is out of Virginia, Minnesota. Uh he was one of the trail maintenance crew uh of of um Rock Solid that worked on Redhead, so he's intimately familiar with the landscape and the trail building that took place there. Um I met with him a couple times and have spoke with him about preventative maintenance and really what it comes down to is he he has knowledge of areas on the trail that i- if we if we look at them right now currently, this this year, um we can do some minor trail maintenance that will prevent major trail maintenance from happening in the future, and a lot of that has to do with water um and the way it flows. And so uh we have this in our current budget for contract work and it's unspent, and so I'm hoping that the council will um vote to enter into contract with with Eric. He's fantastic and he's local and he knows Redhead, and I think that he'll be an asset not just for the maintenance on the trail, but also ideas and 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 letting us know some thoughts on our app as we advance through the LCC Mar.
Okay. Thank you, Bridgette. I a question, um just so I look through the contract, it said it was, you know, contract worth totaling fifty-four hundred and spending up to seven thousand?
Yeah, i- yeah, if time allows. I don't think time allows at this point to go anywhere beyond the fifty-four hundred, but um yeah, that's the request.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? All right, I would look for a motion to uh approve resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, I switched pages here. Enter a contract into Range Trail Works.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. My final uh request is to in is to uh submit a grant application for the Chisholm Community Foundation for the second round uh in twenty twenty-three for thirty thousand to get into place some new surfacing at Memorial Park adjacent to the splash pad uh for the purpose of a safe surface for kids in, you know, shoes utilizing we we it's with the soft opening, it was an eye-opener as to what the actual safety issues are there and and how the park is now being utilized and um so I I see a grand remodel of that entire park, but I think we need to start with the gravel because it is um problematic not only for safety with the youth, but with the splash pad, the pea gravel going down the drain and all of that, so. Asking to submit grants um to CCF for that.
That's great. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mr. Mayor, for resolution number zero nine two-three dash six two. Support.
Thank you, April. Thank you, Cheyenne. Trying to ask for some clarification here. Um.
Yeah, I'm I'm on the CCF board and I do, I am a voting member, so I will be abstaining.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, Bridgette.
Good job.
Okay, Stephanie, Ms. Scraba, good evening.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. Um the first item I have on the agenda tonight is resolution zero nine two-three dash six-three and requesting um approval to apply for a grant to the I triple R for the Chet Thomasoni History Arena and Grilling Club.
More money desperately needed. That'd be great. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve zero nine two three dash six-three.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Stephanie.
The next item I have on the agenda, um I will defer to the the council members that we have in the Economic Development Authority who are Mayor and Counselor Halliva. We had um Jennifer Ivanka has been speaking with us from Ivanka Insurance on her current building. As you know, one of the buildings that she currently has, she did have to demo. Um she's in the works of trying to rebuild that business, so within that she is um requesting the parcel that is next to the building that was demoed. Um if you guys have further conversations on what?
So counsel, I would, I think this is lacking some information. Um in my opinion, I think that we should table this and maybe add it to our working session.
Yep.
Talk about that?
Yep.
So if I could get a motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item that I have on the agenda is a policy for um from the VCA Criminal History Record Information Checks. Um Susan and Rachel have been in contact with the VCA and we've been working with our H R consultant Ravina Claxton on creating this um policy that has been approved by the VCA. We just need the final approval from the council. We've gone through the steps that we need to be to be compliant on this, and then we will be audited every three years on this policy and making sure that we're following it. So we're just looking for approval on this policy.
Hey, counsel, I'll look for a motion for uh to approve this policy.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Youth in Action Request for Sponsorship. It's on your packet here. The Youth in Action is requesting a donation in support of their program. The City of Chisholm donated five hundred dollars to their program in the past. Um yeah, with the monies that we have coming in now with uh, you know, our gambling funds, I think um you know, we're probably gonna start seeing a lot more of these. Um you know, I do think these are great. I think we should support this. Uh I think eventually we're gonna see so many where we're actually gonna have to start creating some kind of policy that kind of go through and dictate who gets what, but. I would look forward to uh supporting this organization. And we have our levels here. Um I think we did five hundred dollars in the past. That's what I would probably look for now.
Eileen, does this fit under the gambling?
I I'll need to clarify that. Or I don't have to, I'll see where. I'm happy to do that if you can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Uh this is, if it's a youth activity, it falls within a permissible expenditure under charitable gambling.
Good. Perfect.
Do we have a local?
Well, it's, I can speak a little bit on it. So Y I is a organization in the school. It's a a club, I guess you would say, that um that happens in the school. The counselor is is in charge of it. I guess I don't know how many kids are in it, um so I can't speak to you know, the number, and I don't know if the number is tied to. But I mean, there are some kids that do go from Chisholm High School. I just, I have no idea how many.
Yeah. Counsel, your thoughts?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
The amount of five hundred dollar use sponsor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, schedule a working session on September twenty-six, four P M. for Strong Towns City Council briefing. Counsel, this I believe is Tuesday. So if that can work in your schedule, and obviously they wanna come and uh speak to the council before they speak to the public, um.
Would this be uh available for like people via Zoom, like that wanna come up in the community?
So I I'm not sure about the public portion. I think that's gonna be separate, but um you know, so.
Right. I'll just. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe the the public pieces, but okay, senior center, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any chance we could schedule this at four thirty? That day? Well, their public meeting is the same night at five thirty, so I assume.
Oh, it's the same night?
Okay. Okay.
I'm gonna have it at four and just make them sit around for half an hour. Cheyenne?
Should be fine.
We can schedule the meeting. If you can't make it, you can't make it. Now, we all have jobs and lives and many other meetings also, so I would look for a motion to uh schedule that working session on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, four P M. For Strong Towns City Council briefing in the council chambers.
It's at the senior center.
This one's at the senior center too?
Yes.
At the senior center.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Travis. Support. Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee for Adult Use Cannabis Law. Um so here we come back around again, uh and we talked about this a number of times. I I really wanna put this committee together because I think there are so many variables that we are looking at. Um you know, you can't smoke uh city property, but yet the city owns a campground. Um you know, we drug test for our employees, but there's some jobs that might not dictate, you know, checking for cannabis use as it's a legal substance for those over twenty-one. Um you know, we might not want it and we might wanna have some kind of repercussions if somebody's in our pocket park smoking around, you know, where children might be, because right now we don't have anything in place. So I would like to form a committee um to engage and look at all these uh different aspects. Um I know that there's a number of counselors, I believe, that are interested in being on this, so I would say I have to limit that to three, obviously. Um I would want our city staff to be part of this also, um you know, because they are also professionals that work in our economic development and our public safety and health. Um I would also request that when we do form this committee that these are held via Zoom um or interacting via Zoom and during our daytime. You know, we have plenty of meetings in the evening. Our staff is worked constantly and to put another committee on them on top of every every other committee we have, I think is unfair, so I think we need to try to find time in our schedules if you're on this committee to interact between eight and four. Um so I would open up who uh on the council would like to be part of this committee.
I would, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to.
April? Jed?
I do not.
You do not?
No.
Cheyenne would like to?
Got three.
That's.
I'll do it if it doesn't matter to me. If you don't have three, I'll take one. But if you wanna do it, go ahead.
I'm more than happy to not be on another committee. All yours.
Okay. I would look.
I have a bunch. It's all yours.
So I would look for a motion. Um so obviously Administrator Scraba, um Chief Manager, Analyst Director Larson, Mandy, can you find the time? And uh Bridgette, I believe that you should also be part of this. You know, um so I would just leave it up to Stephanie if you can to uh organize and arrange the meeting times and uh those can attend as often as you can. Cheyenne, uh was that a motion?
I will make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? So it's Cheyenne, not me, right?
No, it's you.
It's you.
Okay. So it consists of Administrator Scraba, Chief Manager, Jeff Larson, Mandy Galley, Bridgette Ruska, Counselor Halliva, Counselor Holverson, and Counselor Calvin. You all do great work, I know.
You all do great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, schedule a working session for September twenty-fifth. I believe. What's that?
You missed four.
I missed four. Cross that one out. Traffic committee, okay, sorry. Number four. Request uh I have a request for the traffic committee to review areas of the city where we need to be restricting uh heavy weight vehicles. I know we have a signage in the industrial park. Uh not all the semis that drive into the community um come through the the industrial park. I believe we have some areas of the community that are being beat up and torn down by deliveries going into side streets, residential areas where they could easily be going on to, you know, the county road that's coming through town. Uh and there's other areas also, so I would look, uh I would hope to direct the traffic committee to look at what streets might warrant this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just I I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure. Make it to the traffic committee besides Jim, who's obviously an engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a lot of people would have no idea the difference between a F one fifty and and a semi, and I'm not trying to dumb it. It's not their wheelhouse. Um I I would think it would be better to have a committee where like Larry Fullstead, who does is a class A driver and understands size of vehicles and weight of vehicles and and does the city maintenance. And Jim and if you want myself, um and if you go by the traffic committee to to assign this to the traffic committee, you're just assigned to Jim anyways. Because he's the only one that knows what you're talking about. So really, the traffic committee is is. Yeah, oh yeah, that's not, that's not really.
Right. What, so we, my thought was because this has to do with traffic, that should restart, and then if we need to assign other members as needed, you know, like any other committee we have. So it's just you and Jim? I had.
Larry.
It's a police commission. It's within the traffic committee.
Yeah, the police.
What's the police commission?
The traffic committee with Larry, with Jim and I.
Okay.
Um so, yeah, I would, I would.
So when we did the uh reduced mileage speed limousine over in uh Devon?
Yep.
That's same group?
Yep. But we go with this, you know, we we the this the the traffic engineer is the one that really decides everything in the middle recommendation of that. This is low weight and stuff, probably be better fit for this Larry.
Okay. So I would like to uh designate a crew. Jim, would you be on this committee?
No.
Funnier than I am. Chief Manager, would you be on this committee?
I would too.
Yeah, right? And Larry's not here, so he can't say no, so. Travis, were you sitting? You weren't on that committee? I could've swore you were part of the traffic committee.
I'll be honest, I don't know. If I, I mean, if you want a council rep, they can tell me, but.
Well, Cheyenne's on the police commission, but I don't know if she's technically part of the traffic committee. I thought it was just a commission, Jim and I um as part of that. Um but she is a.
Cheyenne would do.
Cheyenne needs to be on that committee, necessarily.
She just got out of the board.
See? Marty's on a much more fun committee.
I took the cannabis. I got the cannabis.
I'm a hurt person to have on this. I know so much about vehicles.
Well, at least to bring it back to the council, so someone on there. So I would look for a motion to appoint Counselor Mikla Rahah, Chief Manager, Supervisor uh Holstead, and Engineer Johnson. No, I don't think we need the police commission.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now to schedule a working session. So we did discuss, um, one, uh, meeting got canceled, um, with the school board on Monday, the twenty-fifth. So, uh, that is open, uh, for a four-thirty working session. That worked for everybody, and on that working session, I believe that we were gonna have, so we'll have the Ivanka request, um, budget meeting, and was there something else? Last forty update. Am I forgetting anything else? Nope. Four-thirty P M, Monday, the twenty-fifth. Can I get a motion? April, thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Jed, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Halliva?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to call to consider the possibility of adding a junior council member from the Chisholm High School to the City, Chisholm City Council. I think it's super important we get younger people interested in city government. And being Chisholm is doing several projects right now, it'd be the perfect time to add this potential person. Maybe like a one-year term. I was thinking, we're gonna, we're working with Counselor Vaki to find the right candidate, or they have election over there. But we're seeing a lack of younger people being involved in government, you know, in their twenties and thirties. So I think it's gonna be a super good, uh, time to add a person, to give them some experience. And, you know, we, we got people in office for thirty years, we have, we need terminals in some places, so it'd be a perfect time to change stuff up, so.
Okay, so I left this as informational, so we could discuss this and figure out, you know, what the process was gonna look like or what kind of. Cause I just, I'm not sure if this, are they going to shadow a counselor? So we're gonna look for a volunteer from the council to take on that mentor role. Um, and I wanted to make sure that was kind of the, the process or the thought, um, if that's gonna be engaging or if it's gonna be engaging through the staff. Because I don't know if the staff has much time right now to shadow, so, or, you know, and, um, is it gonna be working with the school as far as they have an election for a senior year? Do they have a student council? So maybe.
Yeah, I guess, um, my recommendation would be that, you know, I certainly can go back to the school. They can, I'm at the school, so he certainly could, I can work with them, whoever it might be. If they wanna shadow me, that's fine. Um, but, uh, yes, I would say that I would be looking for a s- student council officer that's a senior.
Mr. Mayor?
That would be my.
Do you, so your, is your student council, um, organized by each?
Grade.
Grade has president, vice president, and then do you have an executive council that?
Actually, no, they don't do it by grade anymore.
Oh, they don't?
It's just, it's just one student council.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they've had as much interest, and so now it's just one. I believe it's two, if I remember correctly, I think there's two seniors and two juniors on it right now, of the four positions.
Do you have any history on this, Brad?
No, I've actually never worked with a junior coun- a junior council member. So, but I can, I can dig into it to see, I can't imagine there'd be much of a legal impediment to do it, but I can look at or ask around with other colleagues that I work with, uh, or bump into and see if anybody has a, uh, kind of a model of a program.
Yes, I was, I was wondering the same thing, if, you know, the Minnesota Cities has anything regarding this, or, I mean, they can't be a member because of the rules and statutes.
Right.
And they can't vote, but they could certainly come as an intern type person and like say, shadowing and interning and and maybe don't limit it to one person for a year, but maybe have two or three people rotate through for two, three months at a time, if there's that much interest. If there's only one person interested, they can keep going for the whole year if they want, but if they have two or three, might even be better to get, or even have two or three shadow. Come to the meetings, talk to us, read the agenda.
Yeah, get some interest.
Read the budget for three hours.
Obviously, if they, uh.
Stuff like that. Cover the working sessions.
Yeah, well, obviously, if you're down to four in the school, maybe, uh, it's a good time to try to generate that interest.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, just a quick, a quick look, League of Minnesota Cities does have, uh, lead, uh, youth engagements examples, example programs. So I'll reach out, collect some information, send it over, um, to Administrator Scraba.
Okay.
So do you want me to, would it be better if I just made a general announcement to seniors and said, if you're interested, or seniors and juniors, sign up? Or should it strictly be student council?
So I think obviously the first thing we need to, before even just, you know, we gotta create a program, I mean. And then if it's going to be, you know, if you can open up to everybody, or is it going to be, you know, just for those who are already engaged and, you know, trying and.
Jeff, do you wanna bring something to the table on the working session?
I can, yeah, I can get some more information on it. Yeah.
I'm willing to look up stuff, too?
Yeah, yeah, I can, no problem.
Okay, so we will need to add that to the, uh, working session. Well, is it too late to go back and change that and, uh, motion to add that to the working session, or, uh?
Yeah, if you could add it.
Okay.
And I believe the working session was, uh, April and Jed, is that correct?
Yep.
Um, April, would you revise your, uh, motion to include the, um, junior council member?
I need the, the motion to add, um, the junior council member to the working session.
Okay. Revis your, uh, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Miscellaneous, does anybody have any miscellaneous?
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, our custodian for the city, what buildings does she clean? Does she clean, does this building, the, the Amos Garage, Fire Hall?
She goes into all of them.
Okay. Okay.
Now Larry's not here to direct on that, but she got, she, she does go into all of them.
Okay.
And then there's probably some areas that, um, she might not even know about. And, uh, above the fire hall and the gym and the bathrooms up there, that's, they're not used by city staff and, you know.
It is, it's a part-time position.
Yeah, right.
So, is there anything that you, uh, noticed that you, you know, mentioned to your staff or Larry and?
Yeah, okay.
Most of it comes without communication as far as, you know, somebody just doesn't know if there's something that you notice. And yes, hopefully, uh, it will grow to a full-time position. All right, uh.
I have a couple of things.
Yes.
First thing is, um, is smoking is not permitted on city property, or is?
I believe it's not permitted.
And it, it depends on what you mean by city property, so.
For the first time in, since I've been eighty, I had somebody light up in the football stadium last Friday at a home game.
Around children and.
School function day. Now, the high school league, I mean, if it's owned by the school, which it's not, this, it, it, there's no smoking, you know, but we ran into a, well.
So inside the football stadium, I would say no smoking because it's a place where you're, it, it's gonna be, you're gonna be directly exposing youths. But the public sidewalks are a different story.
Right.
We don't currently have an ordinance in place that prevents smoking tobacco on public sidewalks.
Right, okay, so they'd have to go out and anyway.
Yep.
Uh, then my second question is, um, I'm trying to remember who was on the initial sports complex committee? I know it was me and you, was it just the two of us?
Mm-hmm.
And who else? Ma- Mandy was on it. I'm just wondering if we could find a time during the day where we could meet. I mean, we don't have to put it on pit, you know, just email it out and find a time, but I think we should discuss a few things.
Excellent. Anything else?
That's it.
Yeah, a good point with cigarettes, I mean, that's a lot of communities never had anything with cigarettes as far as ordinance is and where, and, you know, that's also been a nuisance in some areas, so. Um, we will recess to a closed session now, compliance with statute thirteen D point zero five labor agreement. You don't need a motion for that, correct?
Um, yeah, we generally, generally we do a motion to enter a closed session.
Look for a motion. Thank you, April, support. Thank you, Jed, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good evening. Have a good night.